Trustee Hall Rex, your trustee listener. She's on Zoom, but I'm not sure she can hear us. Trustee Maleopolis, trustee Underdon.
Here.
Trustee Rubin, trustee Scott.
Here.
President.
Here. Two members of the board are ill and requested that they will leave the Zoom in compliance with the village's established remote meeting policy as required a physical court is present. So it's all. Is there a consensus about the trustee's attendance that we can accommodate the remote attendance of trustee's? Listener who I hope will be able to look up.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Everyone's agreed that we're not live streaming this meeting tonight, but the video recording will be available on the village's YouTube channel. We're working on our technical difficulties with Gail. Uh, next portion of meeting is um public comments for those in attendance to address the board regarding non agenda items. I'll ask that public comments that relate to agenda items be provided when we reach that item on the agenda. All comments limited to three minutes. I'll notify speaker when their time is up. If you have a comment on the agenda item that is included on tonight's committee, the whole agenda, I'll ask that those comments be provided when we reach that item on the agenda. In compliance with pre-established rules approved by the board, I'll limit total public comments and non-agenda items to not more than thirty minutes. Speakers should state their names for the record. Any comments uh on nas agenda items from the public?
Okay, there aren't. Trustee listener can hear us, but she's working on her microphone.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is review and discussion of the draft comprehensive plan. And I'll ask for the plan commission chair Bruce Hubard, our consultant Z Brown, and our development service director Taylor Baxter to present. Bruce, are you starting?
I think Lee is gonna start.
Okay.
I can speak fast.
Okay.
I will try to get to your questions. First and foremost, uh, this is a reporting in part of the process that the plan commission has made uh and and its response to public uh comment uh post the open house that was held. Uh, it's also recognizing the fact that we now have a a draft web version of the plan. The plan commission from the start wanted this to be a live living document that could engage with the community without having to come to village hall and pick up a copy and read it. If you can, Ben, you can swap to the web um page. Um, hopefully you've had a chance to click on it in the link that we sent. It allows for you to navigate through the plan. Um, so the maps are interactive and then you can zoom in and most importantly, it has tabs at the top that let you jump forward rather than having to scroll through the entire document. You know, switch back to the that remains the same driving six uh elements of the plan, the the building of community character, the integration of sustainability, economic resilience, care and support for the community, delivering excellence in planning, management, and governance, and then a separate section on land. So that remains consistent what you saw last time we were here and the document itself. Um. One more. So we had this open house on July ninth. We had uh an opportunity to speak directly with community members. We also have received quite a number of uh comments, both on our website, the active responses to the post at the time, but also a number of emails that have circulated. Next. So I'm showing here uh copies and you can scroll two or three of these. Uh, these were the boards that were brought here at the open house. They uh they've uh explained the the ideas, the goals, and the strategies, and there were some graphics to help explain what it might look like or what it means to the community. There were three themes that were identified in response to the things that we heard from the community. The first is being the concern over the potential change to central business district character. The second is what we have proposed in the plan for the RD zoning district along Green Bay Road. And the third being the potential additional diversity in building type within the single-family residential district, and I'm gonna try to address two of those. So the expressed concern uh regarding the business districts, it essentially is calling for the potential on the most central of the blocks um to have greater height than the limitations that the zoning currently has. It allows uh lesser heights potentially on the properties that are on the periphery of the of the central business district with the recognition that as you are directly adjacent to residential uses, you don't want to have as much height of all. The uh the commission sees this as an opportunity of encouraging greater vitality within the downtowns. Um, it recognizes that these offensive properties, no matter what happens to them, and they will remain uh a need for the for the community and specifically our existing um exterior appearance design process uh which reviews every uh use within the business districts will still be in place. Even if we allow for greater height, they still have to prove that it is consistent in character uh with the surroundings. The second piece of that downtown uh potential is to uh create and allow for a tool that would allow for a planning or development format so that more than one uh building potentially can be uh built consistent in a plan for for some sites. Um, that's that tool does not yet exist within the village. It does not exist for uh residential development either, and there was a clear discussion as part of the process of the Hoover approval that we don't have the tool to be able to address that. So we have essentially two scales that that tool might work at first. Uh, if there is any future development on large sites in the residential district and separately how it might work best within the central business district or any of the business districts to accommodate infill development that is consistent with the with the community. So um recognizing that this is a potential change in the character, the commission wanted to reemphasize the fact that we're not losing the appearance review authority and of of each element. Okay, the next, excellent. The second um concern was raised about the RD multi-family district along Green Bay Road and the commissions uh the commission recognized that though there had been some attempts to uh build multifamily within a multifamily zone, the RD district is a is a stated RD multifamily zone. But RD uh is multifamily in that the development of a of a multifamily building is a special use, additional use that requires exceptional review just on whether or not that use makes sense in that area. The commission is calling for additional study to determine whether or not we can make that a permitted use, still requiring appearance review to ensure that it's consistent with the surrounding. The third element is uh the question about whether or not there can be the introduction of any other building form within our single-family districts. Now, I will admit that the memo that we sent to you didn't catch up with the recommendations of the plan commission itself. The plan commission wanted to make sure that in response to things they heard from the community, that we clarify language to assure people that we're not trying to introduce grossly across the entire community multifamily buildings everywhere or any form other than the single family without significant review of the proposal itself. And so uh we have reworded and I'm I'm going to um call attention to the highlighted wording, which is in the RA, RB, and RC, they're streets, each of these is a single-family district. Single-family district, study how and where the zoning regulations can accommodate attached single-family dwellings, town hosts, townhome-style buildings and/or accessory dwelling units. The important change there is the recognition is study how and we're not assuming that it can be done anywhere. And if it was to be done within any of the single-family districts, I would assure you that the plan commission will recommend appearance review for any such. So these are highlighting essentially the um the changes that the plan commission uh is recommending to you as part of moving this forward in advance of your establishing a public hearing date that the plan commission will will hold. Excellent. That's our question to you. If you had a chance to move through these three major uh elements, um are is the plan commission's response adequate in terms of clarifying what our intent is and is that satisfactory?
So let me say the following first. Um, I know, and I'm not sure the extent to which these revisions address the concern, but I have talked to trustee listener who's been on the plant commission. And she was concerned, uh, but it's possible you've addressed it. That that it looked like the proposed plan was going further than just studying, you know, how and where. And I want to make sure she gets a chance to talk. So let me just say uh the following briefly. First, the whole idea of a plan. I actually I have this thing that quarterly I do is it gets sent around to the village and one of the things I talked about with the plan is um the plan is a plan looking forward. We're trying to figure out how to address the next ten, twenty years. It's not an ordinance. It's not a regulation. It's not any of those things. It's just our best idea about how to address problems when they are addressed. So for the benefit of the residents, we're taking the plan seriously. We're looking at it seriously. But nothing in the plan is happening tomorrow. And it might never happen. The idea of the plan is to help the board and future boards look at issues that might be coming up. So to anybody who looks at this and says, oh, my God, you're gonna do acts. No, no, we're just looking at it. Um, and 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 as something to think about. On the three contested issues, I there are, I know there are folks who are very concerned about the possibility of additional height. Uh, and they think that would you know, destroy the village for the uptown business district. I guess I'm more sympathetic to the to the the current plan, which is we should consider whether to have additional height in the sort of central areas, recognizing a lot less height as we get further from the center of uptown, although I note that it's possible the tallest building uptown is currently on the border and no one's lost their minds and the uptown business district has not fallen into the weight. But but still, I think that I am comfortable with the concept. Uh, not that we're doing it yet, but I'm comfortable with the concept on the height in the uptown business district. Um. I I think there was an article in New York Times few months ago about a suburb of New York City in New Jersey that had opened up most of that suburb to townhomes. And they and the gist of the article was this had happened. It had been great. Uh, that there were more people, there was more money, it was just great, and that the tenor of the village had not changed. That was interesting. That's news. That's something to think about. But Glencoe is not there yet. Uh, I'm not there yet. I I don't think the board is there yet. So um when we look at changes to sort of the in the, you know, the single-family areas. Um, I think it's fine to look at what we might want to tweak and whether there are things that we should do, but I want to make it make sure it's clear to the residents that nobody has decided that we're opening up with it, we're changing the single-family to townhomes and um or to duplexes. And nobody has decided that we're we decided that accessory dwelling units, ADUs are okay everywhere. That I've not decided in my own mind that, you know, we shouldn't be looking at some of this stuff and maybe looking at it in particular places for tests to see whether it could work. One of my kids lives in Alameda in California, which is a lovely, extremely pricey place. And the state of California basically overruled all the local zoning and said, you can do ADUs. My son and his wife did an ADU, not because they're renting it out, but to sort of expand. It's funny. Nothing bad happened. The neighborhood is still great, so I'm I'm not persuaded that that would be the end of the world. However, I want to make sure the plan is clear that nobody is saying we're doing that tomorrow. And nobody is saying we're doing anything without further thought, but I think it's okay to say that we can consider these things. Well, I know one of the things that happened to the plan commission, some people came in and said, you know, it would be great if grandma and grandpa could live in this town. Um, they can't because it's too expensive and there's just nothing available. Some people came in and said, it would be great if, as I descend into Geezerdum, which, by the way, I'm doing now, that I could stay in this town. And and the possibility of maybe some duplexes somewhere. I I I don't want to say we're not gonna think about it. We're not gonna talk about it. So I so I think we should say just be so be careful. We, yes, we should look into this. Might be a good idea in some places, but I want to make sure our residents understand that nobody is slipping this, you know, under the transom here that surprise. Uh, so we're not doing that. And then the third thing, uh, the multifamily one. Yeah, I feel to a certain extent the horse is out of the barn. A a good opportunity for multifamily is the what we used to call the Hoover Estate, Out Forest Edge, and now it's gonna be thirty fabulous but high-end uh single-family homes. Uh, so that's that's gone. But I I I agree with the plan suggesting that we should look at where it makes sense to have multifamily. There aren't a lot of places under our current scheme that might make sense, but there are some and we should be looking at that because again um multifamily could make sense for certain categories of folks who are already in Glencoe among others. And then I'll say one other thing. If the state of Illinois government is not the same as California's, but it's not shockingly different either. And at some point, the folks running the California government um said enough, and they overruled local zoning because the local people said no to everything all the time. Uh, I think it is important that Glencoe will be able to point the things that it has done to accommodate reasonable multifamily so that we can point to something because if we can't in the real world, at some point, somebody like the state or the county where we not have these controls might take that decision for us. Okay, so that's what I think. So I so I think you may need to tweak a little bit more the the part about the single-family areas. I'm, we haven't decided what to do, and even if it's in the plan, we're not necessarily gonna do it, but I think we should consider um greater height. That will make our uptown business district more vibrant. Um, and maybe we'll allow for residential there too. And um I I'm not multifamily, you know, I don't know that we have a lot of space, but I I I think we should be looking at that um and, you know, to pick the obvious, Green Bay Road. We already think that's appropriate for multifamily and it is. Um, I think we're doing it tomorrow, but.
Can I uh make a proper few comments? I was trying to make sure that uh some of your points that we thought about. Remember that I was working on a plan for um the years, two. And we had a lot of authors. That means we've had consultants, subconsultants, and fact commissioners all, you know, providing the language. And I was just going through the plan before the meeting. Um, you don't have to follow this anymore, but if you look at big idea, number one, which is the character of the village, goal number two on page eleven. To goal says provide a variety of housing packages, so the full spectrum of life stage. So we did hear that comment a lot. That that they wish that people at different ends of life spectrum will find a place to live in Glencoe. The objectives are using the kind of language that the bank mission was very comfortable with and that I think speaks to your point. Explore zoning changes to allow for more housing types. Explore them. Not, there was nothing immediate. Explore them. The next one was consider the feasibility of accessory dwellings. I think that is along the lines of what she was suggesting. Big idea number three, goal six on page twenty-one. Just take some notes. The goal was evaluate potential redevelopment and development opportunities along Green Bay Road. The objective was update zoning and development regulations to encourage small and mid-sized multifamily residential development along Green Bay Road in the RD district. Uh, one of the recommendations later was consider not having a special use but be a permitted use. So most of our multifamily recommendation was centered around Green Bay Road, I think. Looking, I think that's a fair statement. There are some other statements that are about implementing changes. Uh, I think there are some, I think there are a couple of places where we can be more consistent and adhering to this considering exploring to reach something that we were very persistent about, except maybe once or twice. And maybe Gail, uh, if you're hearing me, um, don't know if you can hear me. There's a uh, I I do see one or two places where we may have slipped away from that language, but it wasn't intentional, and I think the our back mission had a philosophy of promoting this as something for further dialogue. And lastly, about um height. One of the things that we talked about was um not just in improving the vibrancy of the downtown district, not so much as a commercial undertaking. But that in today's development economics, height gave the opportunity to get a better development. Because if you only can go three stories and you're trying to deal with parking, you're gonna foreclose a lot of opportunities. The plan commission didn't think that height was a magic solution. But it's possible that without height, we could end up from an aesthetic standpoint with something really inferior to what we're looking for. So a number of people on the plaque mission talked about having carrots and incentives, having something that we could provide to extract back from a development proposal more of the things that we're looking for. So I think it's important to understand we weren't looking at height simply as uh more is better, more more vibrancy. We were really thinking of it in terms of character of the of the of the downtown area.
I, one thing I didn't say, thank you um for all the hard work. Um, it's easy, you know, you get to the end of this, you start nitpicking, you can say, consider here or think about there, but um, I I I'm grateful. I think the board is is grateful. And nobody is talking about going at this thing with a blowtorch. At the same time, it is important that our residents understand that we're not, you know, there's been no secret plan to change the village into Skokie or private park, pick a place that's lovely that we think isn't as lovely as Glencoe. Uh, so we're we're not doing that. And even, you know, whatever it says in the plan ultimately, the change that happens as a result of that is zero until there's actually a change in the zoning ordinance, or there's actually a development that gets proved, none of which happens immediately in secret. Any other board members?
Yeah.
Seal.
Um, oh, can you hear me? It's Gail.
Yep, we can.
Oh, good. Um, so I think what I had been objecting to was the, you know, that word revise um when it came to, you know, listing all the um different zoning um classifications. And I think that the um changes that you're talking about um certainly are helpful in uh softening that statement because I think all the other suggestions and things that we wanted considered were kind of in a softer context. So I would like the consideration that you've given to that. Thank you.
Dudley, is there anything? I I I do not mean to want to put you on the spot. If you were here, I wouldn't be doing this. But since you're not, I want to make sure you have an opportunity to say something. If you do, because you've been at at all these meetings, you're a professional planner. Uh, so.
I don't know. Can you guys see me?
We can.
See and hear.
See and hear. Okay. Well, there there are a lot of definitions of planning. One of my favorites is that it's the link between knowledge and action and what uh thing and one that I've done in trying to my in my career is try to have our decision makers make informed decisions and trying to understand the implications of the different decisions that they're making. And I think we're being very uh forward-thinking on this and saying, these are some of the paths that we can go down. Uh, you know, we can, we'll compare, but compare uh some of these uh desired outcomes and see how they relate to the goals that we have for the community. Sometimes these things overlap. Sometimes they conflict. But in in the end, I think we're looking at relatively small incremental change. Uh, one of the terms I like to use for the any consideration about density in the community is what I call gentle density. I mean, we're not talking about major changes here. So I think that um this is is I call that a nest. So this is in the very, you know, top level and uh we're hoping to have these goals, objectives, and then uh to serve as a guidance for actions. Um, and then we, as we review the actions, we have to look at both the financial uh and other impacts of the community. So um the good news is we're making progress. The other news is just because we finished this section doesn't mean we don't have more to do. And that's what the, you know, we'll get to the strategic plan, which is part of that process. Um, but I think this is a good a good start for us on down that down that way. I'm I'm gonna uh thank the commission for their work, citizens in the community for coming to the workshops and the sessions that we've had um and the members of our advisory committees who met, I believe, at least twice with the consultants um on this effort, and I really appreciate that. So this isn't isn't something that that somebody quotes told us to do. This kind of bubbled up from the from the from the community, and now we're trying to sort out uh those kinds of things that that really uh we can establish uh both financially and and terms of other priorities. Um, it's interesting that that uh there are some other elements of the plan, whether it's um uh historic preservation or sustainability or even economic development that nobody Uh, historic preservation or sustainability or even economic development that nobody said anything about yet. But there, uh, everything is related to everything else. And uh, I just um, you know, hope that we don't, you know, uh, you know, forget about the other elements um as well. So anyway, I I guess that's another way to say onward and upward and let's see how the community uh reacts to the plan in a formal. Uh, hearing process.
Any other trustees? We um. Okay, um, anything you guys want to say to us before we?
We will uh redouble our efforts to make sure that the language remains consistent within the document. If if clarity is necessary, we will adjust it before we go to the public.
As you're thinking about public care, maybe I have a couple of an attached single uh. Family home, that's a duplex.
Yes, attached would be more than one unit together.
Okay, okay, um, uh, consider. To make. Our lives easier with your how and where, put it here, oh, and where. And uh, that'll um. That will improve my life, his lives, their lives.
Is there, there's no date set? We will publicly announce it as soon as the date is announced.
Okay, thank you. The next, I have the agenda is review and discussion of the draft twenty twenty five to twenty twenty seven. And co-strategic plan in light of our prior practice by now till twenty twenty seven is optimistic.
I was not as optimistic as we were in the last.
Our assistant village manager Ben Whiteberg and our. Will be. Are we, I have a schedule here.
Oh, that's okay.
That's good.
Good.
Well, good evening, everyone. Uh, this evening staff is requesting board discussion of the village's strategic plan. The village's existing strategic plan was adopted in April twenty eighteen, with the then anticipated expiration date set for twenty twenty one. Initially, it was intended to cover the twenty nineteen to twenty twenty one calendar years, but two one-year extensions at that time were requested by staff due to the pandemic and other external factors. Then due to the seating of new trustees, um, and some key staff position updates, it was extended again to twenty twenty four. This past March, the village board approved a consulting services contract with Corey Forrest Plash. Of CP two consulting to begin development of a new strategic plan. Since then, the board and staff have worked closely with Corey to develop the trap, the draft plan included in the agenda packet for consideration this evening. Key steps in the process are listed on screen, including an environmental scan and an internal survey, excuse me. Which served to provide an overview of community and staff demographics, statistics, and data regarding all village departments. And other internal and external indicators of the village's current conditions. These steps allow village staff to understand and equip themselves and Corey ahead of focus groups. Or by the consultant met with six focus groups made up of representatives from the community, business operators, nonprofits, and religious organizations. Students from local schools and staff, results of which were shared with the board as a component of the May twenty twenty four, can be the whole strategic plan update. On June third, Corey and village staff hosted the board trustees at the Chicago Botanic Garden for a fall day retreat. Where goals, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats to the village over the next three years were considered and discussed. Since that retreat, staff participated in several workshops, pouring refining and determining the means to achieve those goals established from that point. This has led to the development of the working draft as it exists today. The draft includes these updates to the village's vision, mission, and values as seen on the screen behind me, as well as laying the groundwork. With strategic initiatives to achieve the goals of plan. The vision was Glencoe is the community of choice, resilient and connected. It's where everyone feels that they belong. Mission was solution focused and proactive, strategic and sustainable. Glencoe delivers a high quality of life that supports community needs through smart, efficient services. And the values were belonging, integrity, caring, creativity, and a culture of excellence. The plan centers around these four strategic goals, each with associated targets designed to make you progress. These goals are listed on the screen behind me. These were established at the retreat and through the staff workshops, several performance targets have been created for each. The reliable infrastructure strategic goal covers such items as developing a strategy for a reliable water supply. With some options discussed at length during a water workshop earlier this year. A comprehensive road reconstruction plan, which includes looking at all public components of a street when it is being reconstructed, including storms, sanitary. Or of water infrastructure, so not have to retouch that road um to replace different pieces on different timelines. And a few information technology goals with the aim of bringing the village to the cutting edge of technology in order to maximize efficiency and identify where there may be shortfalls. Still on. Moving on to the economic vitality strategic goal, main objective here was to strengthen and enhance the business community in Glencoe. There are several methods that the board and staff have identified to partner with and support the vibrant thriving businesses in town. Including the development of an economic development plan, reestablishing the business services team, and streamlining the commercial development process. We want to be thorough, but also make it easy for business to take place in Glencoe. Next, continuing to build on the goals of being a resilient community. This goal includes the advancements of a few plans to identify opportunities for improvement in sustainability and engagement. As well as internal and external training to prepare and boost awareness of emergencies as they present themselves. And the final strategic goal uh was to continue to improve the village of Glencoe as a workplace of excellence. Is the goal of the board is village leadership to ensure that staff are trained in multiple functions, satisfied in their work to most effectively. And efficiently deliver services to the community and keep Glencoe as a fantastic place to live and work. Wrapping up, we've talked about these strategic goals and some of the associated targets and how staff is planning to achieve them. As part of the last strategic plan, the village was extremely ambitious. And while a lot was accomplished, some components of the plan were not fully achieved. This time around, Corey uh and CB two, as well as the board. Um, helps support keep expectations realistic and achievable while still laying a strong plan for the next three years. In addition, staff intends to bring a contract to the board in October with adoption to the final strategic plan of a contract for a public facing dashboard. Which will allow the community to track the progress of these initiatives. Tonight's staff is looking for comments and feedback on the strategic plan as presented. For feedback to be incorporated into a final plan included for consideration and final adoption on the October agenda. From their pending board approval, staff will begin working on the dashboard ahead of a January first twenty twenty five kickoff for implementation of the new strategic plan. With that, we can open up the floor for discussion.
Say to Corey. I will say to Corey, but she's not here. But also to staff for working on this. Um, good job. This looks like. These are things we're thinking about and it looks like we might even be able to accomplish this, so which I think is the goal.
Just a, just a point to that, as we look at um. It was the third to last page of the document, but it's packet page thirty one. Are the kind of the the targets that are built out and and we spent a significant part of the time with Corey. Building out targets and then um assigning realistic timelines to those targets. Um, and I I think as as you kind of referenced President Ron at the beginning. And Ben referenced it as well in his presentation, the last version of the strategic plan um was vast. Um, it was very ambitious and sometimes um overly so. And while we got a lot done, there's a lot that that was not um accomplished to the level that we were hoped for. Even after a five-year window, which is what the plan ultimately became. And so I I think these are realistic. I think they're legitimate um. From the standpoint of of realistic timelines that tie back to it. And then um, as Ben said, giving us the chance to do a better job of reporting. Um, our progress toward uh those goals. Um, the other thing that was pretty substantially different in the creation of these. Uh, was the amount of staff input in the process. Uh, the last plan was really handled by a few people in the village manager's office in terms of building out the uh. The outcomes, the indicators, and the targets. Um, then that was shared back with the rest of the organization who didn't have nearly the same level of ownership. Um, to those uh to those measures and this was a very, you know, the the staff list here is comprehensive. There were a lot of folks in the room um for a number of meetings, uh, sitting, talking, gaming out. Um, disagreeing with one another, um, trying to figure out the best path forward. And I think, you know, Corey did a really great job of facilitating a complicated set of conversations. And we spent about eight hours together um over the course of two meetings, really, really building out this page. Um, so there was, there's a lot of ownership in this. Um, I think that's a real step forward from the last plan. Pretty, I'm pretty proud of the outcome thus far, so.
One way and show what Corey, in your absence, we were talking about you.
Hopefully all things.
But you know, it was actually positive. Is there anything that you want to alert us to? Uh, you know, the work that you've done, you know, where we are in the plan.
No, I think just um jumping, you know, hearing kind of Phil talking as I was jumping in at the end there, I think. Um, that he summed it up very well. The whole goal of the strategic plan is really to build ownership. And I think the process really did that from um hearing from the community through, you know, uh, you know, the the focus groups. And then hearing internally from staff, having the opportunity to work with the board during the retreat itself, and then bringing it back to staff. To really kind of refine those things that we decided at the board. You know, the the goal is really to make sure that we have ownership or that people really feel like they had a part in the process. And I think that we were able to really involve all of the right people at the right times to accomplish that goal.
Well, this is staff thinking a little tour. Even I had thought, are there any word mouth which is always fine by me? Is there anybody in the board want to weigh in on the plan of, you know, Corey, thank you for your hard work. I know you're not done. And even when you're done with the plan, you're not done, because then you have to ride herd on us to make sure we do it. But, you know. I am pretty jaded about consultants, but watching this process, I'm no longer jaded about you.
Oh, thank you.
The one thing I'd add also is this really is going to tie nicely into the budget process. We are uh this week, um, all the departments are finalizing their initial budget requests. Those are being submitted. Um, there are resources that will be tied into uh the the achievable elements of the strategic plan. Um, I had a conversation with trustee Underdunk a little bit about this yesterday. There are functions within the strategic plan that tie into the comprehensive plan. Particularly on the sustainability front and the infrastructure, uh, the infrastructure components of it. Um, so there really is intended to be, you know, these these stepping stones, if you will, from biggest plan down to the most. Um, uh, the narrowest window and and the narrowest window is generally our our annual budget process. Because it looks at everything in a one-year bite. Then comes the strategic plan. There are other plans also that will advise that the sustainability plan at some point. And other things, and then up to the comprehensive plan, which is really that longest viewed plan uh that the village has placed. But the intention is always that these documents um support one another. So we will work on with this with the strategic plan, so.
Clarifying question about language. So October seventeenth, like explain this to me like I'm a third grader. The strategic plan adoption means essentially we're just saying, yes, we're going to go forward with this and we're, we're soliciting input from the community. And then in the period we've been in January first, we, in much the same way we did with the comprehensive plan.
No, this one's a much less, uh, I think the public engagement component of the strategic plan is.
Okay.
I think what 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 Ben was referring to for October seventeenth is essentially the village board saying. We're comfortable with this three-year plan. Let's make it effective with the first of of the year and that's.
In accordance with the budget.
Yes, so the budget and the strategic plan will then marry um on a, that kind of as a kickoff on January one.
So.
We may or may not bring it final back to you in October. I think we have to work through final edits of it. Um, it 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 doesn't have to be approved. It could be approved with the budget um as well. And so that's a path forward that we could.
Well, I'm not to put too fine a point on it, but so you say the period for public input has passed. Um, is that, so that came via the, you know, different environmental stands and what, so there's no. Opportunity for people, and that may be appropriate to respond to this.
I think there's always the opportunity for response to it. I think um. It like the comprehensive plan is intended to be uh something that adjusts and adapts. So if there are issues that arise that become a greater priority perhaps than others that are listed in here. I I would say the intention is that like the comprehensive plan, there's an annual review. That takes place and ties in with the budget process to make sure that the resources, the resource allocation. To make sure that the the plan can be successful. So I would, I would, I never say anything is locked in stone. Um, because these are intended to be somewhat fluid to adapt as necessary. And of course, anything that's before the village board for adoption um always has the opportunity for additional public input. So it'll be on an agenda.
So. We're, after we do this, there's no truck that gets bought. There's no ordinance that gets passed. There's no, you know, zoning that gets changed. So it's, it's a a plan, a goal, and as we move forward. We'll try to meet the plan and the goals and we hope we'll succeed. Um, what if along the way? Maybe we can't and maybe, yeah, along the way, we figure out, well, man, wasn't such a great idea and we try to do something. So, you know, it's, it's, it's not like the comprehensive plan where it's kind of way out there, but it's still not in ordinance. You know, it's not a zoning change. It's not a truck.
It's still required, success of the strategic plan still requires further actions. And I think to boil it all the way down, President Ron pointed to it just right. There are components in here that may require board action. Whether it's through a budget allocation or through the purchase or consideration of a policy or program. Um, all of which kind of then goes down to the most um shortest window of of duration down to the monthly board meeting, right? So everything um that's within this is it's right on to say that. This, this is going to, these are going to be touched again by the the staff and the board on a regular basis.
Well, then that's the purpose of the public facing dashboard is that that is essentially communicated externally.
Yes.
Just wanted to kind of spell that.
Totally makes sense. Yep, yep.
And if I could add to, uh, my favorite example is say that you get a three hundred thousand dollar grant, but you have to do some things immediately. That may mean that you maybe push off some things for a little bit. So you can meet the terms of the grant, which obviously you you might want to do, right? So there is, as Phil kind of said, this is a dynamic plan because things can change. But with that reporting function, you will be able to not only track with metrics, but also be able to explain. This has been delayed because, you know, we received this other grant and so we needed to, you know, allocate resources there. Um, for a while. So a lot of it has to do.
So a lot of it has to do with in terms of the public facing, just that transparency and just so they can see what the metrics are. That everyone is working towards, but also understand why sometimes um there can be some changes in the timeline anticipated.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, if there aren't. And other coverage, thank you, Ben. Thank you, Cory. Thanks to all the village staff who worked together to get us this far. Um, any, so. Is there any other business for our committee of the whole? Were we adjourned? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, uh, all available.
Hi.
Motion carried, we're adjourned.